Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Aiken City Council meeting on this beautiful January 26th day that we've had. And we appreciate everyone being here with us. And as we go through our agenda, as usual, if you'd like to speak on a particular issue, you certainly may do so, if it's on the agenda, that is. And if you do, just raise your hand and we'll recognize you. And you come over to this area and just give us your name. That's all you, all we ask. And again, we appreciate you being here. At this time, we'll have our invocation and a pledge of allegiance to a flag.
Let us pray. Lord God, Heavenly Father, thank you for coming to us in this place. Lift up the members of our city council that we may be encouraged to do the work assigned to us. You are the one who can meet every need. Give us the needed strength and integrity and help us discern the right path to take. Give all in this room your special blessing. Continue to care for and provide the needed direction for our nation, president, state, governor, and all who labor in the city. Protect our defenders of freedom at home and abroad as they protect us. We ask these things in your name as we say amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we got a call from the representative of the South Park Shopping Center, and he would like us to table till the next meeting, the first reading of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for South Park. So that's item under New Business Number Three. So if we could table that till the next meeting, he would appreciate it.
Okay. Well, it's continued.
Continued.
Yeah.
Use them interchangeably sometimes. First, first item of minutes, consideration of the minutes of the special meeting in January 2015, the work session of January 8th, 2015, and the regular meeting of January 12th, 2015. Do we have a motion in the second for approval?
I move.
I second.
Any questions, any comments? If not, show hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Okay. Next is presentation, we have one, and we're very pleased to have members of the Aiken Mended Hearts with us this evening. And we, we have a proclamation. And I will, and we have Marilyn Cole and Pat Fordman with us. And I think Marilyn is gonna be with me. I'm gonna come down there, Marilyn. We certainly thank both of you for being here this evening and for what you do to help folks with their situations and improving, proving life, really, for many of them, what you do.
That's why I'm here.
That's right. That's why you're here.
That's why I'm here.
Wonderful.
It certainly was my strength after I had my problem. You know, I was a very healthy person, so don't ever think that it can't happen to you.
Right. You're not kidding.
That's right.
Let me, let me read this, if I may. Whereas cardiovascular disease is the leading cause of death in Aiken and accounts for more deaths than cancer, diabetes, suicide, and Alzheimer's disease combined. Whereas making the right choices regarding nutrition, physical activity, medical care, other lifestyle factors is essential to living a healthy life. And whereas Aiken Mended Hearts serves the residents of Aiken by actively supporting cardiac rehabilitation efforts and concert with USCA. And whereas Aiken Mended Hearts recommends people embrace at least one lifestyle change to reduce their risk of heart disease through increasing their physical activity, making heart-healthy dietary changes, and losing weight. Whereas February has been declared America Heart Month, it is to be known to all citizens in Aiken therefore, that the Aiken Mended Hearts chapter employs their cooperation in fighting America's number-one killer, heart disease. Let February be the month when all good men and women seek assurance that their hearts are ready to sustain a long and healthy life. Don't procrastinate and become one who succumbs to the silent killer. Act now and enjoy the February's yet to come. Whereas the facts speak loudly, the city of Aiken does therefore endorse and support through this proclamation, the best welfare of its citizens and all others who henceforth shall profit by this call to health. Now therefore, this council of the city of Aiken does hereby proclaim February 2015 as American Heart Month and encourages all residents to make lifestyle changes to reduce their risk of heart disease and join with the Aiken Mended Hearts in fighting America's number-one killer, heart disease. Done this 26th day of January 2015 and signed by all city council members.
Thank you.
So thank you again for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And how many members do you have now?
Oh, we probably have 96.
96.
Some of them are lifetime, they've been there since we started.
Right.
But we hang in there, and we have, we visit the heart patients every day.
Right.
Thank you very, very much. This is an honor.
A lot of those things I need to do myself. Under Old Business, Item One, Approval of Appointments and Discussion of Appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Yes, sir. We have four appointments for tonight, three by Councilwoman Diggs and another one by Councilmember Mary. Councilmember Diggs would like the appointment of Norman Dunagan to the Energy and Environmental Committee to replace Marilyn Brown, and John Breck to the Board of Zoning Appeals to replace Jason Price, and Barbara Bing, Dr. Barbara Bing, to the Park Commission to replace Mary Barnett. Councilwoman Mary would like to have the reappointment of Bud Coward to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, before we go further, I had requested that Mr. Breck be transferred from the Building Code Appeals to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's actually a transfer request.
Okay. All right. Have nominations for our next city council meeting?
Hold on.
I'm sorry. Let's do, let's vote on it. Do we have a motion in the second to approve this?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? Show hands, please, all in, passes unanimously. Now, nominations, any nominations for next, next city council meeting? Okay. We'll move on. Item Two, Second Reading, Public Hearing and of Ordinance Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with SIB, S-I-B, with Doherty at Whiskey Road Intersection Improvements. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna read this by its title only. It's an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank for the Doherty Road at Whiskey Road widening project. This is similar to the approval that you made at the last meeting concerning the University Parkway. We were able to increase the amount of funding to $1.6 million. All the work has been completed except for right-of-way acquisition and going out for bids. So if you approve this tonight, we will authorize the engineer to go ahead and start the right-of-way acquisition, and hopefully by late spring, early summer, be ready to go out for bids for this project. So for counsel, this is the second reading in public hearing of an ordinance approving the interfund, intergovernmental agreement for the Doherty at Whiskey Road intersection project with the State Infrastructure Board.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank for the Doherty Road, Whiskey Road widening project.
I second.
Any discussion? If not, show hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item Three, Second Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance to Approve an Interfund Loan Agreement. In note, pursue improvement repairs on Valley Green Drive and Highland Park Drive. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Yes, sir. The mayor has read the title into the records. This is allowing us to go forward with a bid award to CBG Incorporated and will authorize $279,477.70 to come out of the capital project sales tax funds. So this is for second reading and public hearing.
Okay. Do we, do we have a motion in the second for approval?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The loan is actually $300,000 on the note.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, but it's, it's approved in the bid for 200.
Correct, but, and we always add at least a 10% on top of that.
You are, I am correct.
But the loan is 300. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Show hands in for approval. Passes unanimously. Item Four, it's a Second Reading, Public Hearing of an Ordinance to Establish Position of Hall of Fame Museum Coordinator, of the Hall of Fame Coordinator.
Okay. Lisa Hall is retiring next month. By approving this, it'll allow us to go forward and to rehire her on a part-time basis for the Hall of Fame and continue the operations that we have there. We've met with the friends concerning this. They're very excited to have her there, and by her working exclusively for around 20 hours a week at this location, we'll be able to finally do some of the things that we have not been able to accomplish in the past. So for your consideration, this is Second Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Establishing the Position of Thoroughbred Racing Hall of Fame Museum Coordinator.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the Second Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance to Establish the Position of Hall of Fame Museum Coordinator.
Okay.
Second.
Second? Discussion? If not, show hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Item Five, it's a Second Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance to Rezone Property at 247 Marlborough Street Southeast from Light Industrial, Light Industrial to Office. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna read the title of this ordinance. It's an ordinance to rezone certain property consisting of .5 acres of land owned by Patricia Reed Hunter from Light Industrial to Office. At the last meeting, the original request was to rezone this for general business. After discussing the fact that if it gets rezoned to general business, then any type of operation go into this particular location, the applicant and council decided it'd be best to consider an office zoning. So that was the change that was made, and so for your consideration tonight, this is Second Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance to Rezone .5 acres at 247 Marlborough Street Southeast from Light Industrial to Office.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes, one, just a clarification. There was some talk last time about she would have to go to the BZA. If it's office, she does not have to go to BZA, or does she still?
That is correct.
That's correct. So in other words, we approve this tonight, just free and clear.
Thank you.
Open for business. Open for business. Okay. Very good. Welcome.
Congratulations.
We haven't voted, but welcome.
We better vote, though, hadn't we?
We voted.
Okay. Show of hands for approval. Okay. Under New Business.
Now you can go next door and get a pizza.
Under New Business, Item One, First Reading of an Ordinance to Rezone 5.78 acres on Gilbert Street Southeast and Banks Mill Road from RSS to RS-15 Residential Single Family. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna read the title. It's an ordinance to rezone certain property located Gilbert Street Southeast from Residential Single Family Stable RSS to Residential Single Family RS-15. This one and the next ordinance that's in front of you are really a companion ordinances. We had an issue that came up on Fermata Place probably about three or four months ago where they wanted to have an addition, and by the fact that it was RSS, the setbacks did not allow this addition to take place. It came to our attention, we were able to work through it. However, it became apparent that the area on Gilbert Street and Fermata Place were both zoned RSS, but none of the properties in that area really had anything to do with a stable environment, and it's, the restrictions on RSS compared to R-15 are much different. So we felt like it'd be appropriate to go ahead and to make this correction. The city manager was the applicant in this pure case. We went through the proper hearing at the Planning Commission meeting. They reviewed this and felt that an R-15, even though not every property is quite large enough, by doing this, we would be grandfathering in any property that is not 15,000 square feet or larger. But it did fit in with the type of regulations that we require in that area and allows for less setback if you have a shed or garage or other type of additions. So the planning commission reviewed it at their meeting, they voted unanimously to approve this rezoning, and so for council's consideration, this is First Reading of an Ordinance to Rezone 14 lots on Gilbert Street and Banks Mill Road from RSS Single Family to Stable to RS-15 Residential Single Family.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second?
Motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, just a clarification. On the rezoning petition that Mr. Ledoux sent in, it said if on an RS-15, by special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals, you can put in a stall. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so, you know, is that, I guess, as we change this, basically, your neighbors could complain and you couldn't put a stall in, I would assume.
Except, yeah, that's correct, but again, this, the properties that are there are single family, they're really, are not large enough, nor do they fit into what we originally considered for an RSS.
Well, and I think even under RSS, you have to be a full acre before you can have a horse, and none of these are, at least.
It's three.
I don't think any of them.
RSS is supposed to be three acres, some are grandfathered in.
For non-conforming properties, I think it still has to be.
It has to be a one acre for a horse.
So they can't, these, these lots can't have horses anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Show of hands in favor. Passes unanimously. Item Two, First Reading with Ordinance to Rezone Properties at Fermata Place from RSS to RS-15 Residential Single Family. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Yes, sir. The mayor read that title in, and again, as stated in the previous case, this is just to correct a situation that we had. These lots are actually even a little bit smaller than on Gilbert Street, but again, they do fit the characteristics of an R-15, and therefore, we're recommending that type of zoning for this from the RSS. So this is the First Reading of an Ordinance to Zone 10 Lots on Fermata Place from RSS Single Family Stable to RS-15 Residential Single Family.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second?
Let's see, we have three.
Who is?
I'll second his motion.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, show hands, please. Passes unanimously.
If I just could for a second.
Sure.
I'd like to thank, I think I heard from more than one council member concerning this issue, and I appreciate you bringing us, you know, alerting us to the fact that this was going on and that there were these problems so that we could get it corrected. It's amazing, after all these years we've had zoning, that this issue's now come up.
Very good. Okay, this item number three, we decided to table, so do we have a?
We need a motion there.
Do we have a motion in second?
I move to continue here.
Continue, yeah, not table.
Okay, show of hands, please. Passes unanimously. Item Four, First Reading of an Ordinance to Approve the Sale of 911 Merah Avenue to S and C Properties. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Yes, sir. Council asked us several months ago, we stated that we felt we should reverse our course and the property that we bought at 911 Merah, that we should not remove the house, which again, especially removal, then the removal of the house would probably cost the city $10,000. Then we would have been maintaining this lot for years to come and taking a decent building off the tax rolls. So it had three very good reasons why we should make that change, and we still have plenty of room to put in the new road going into the Publix Shopping Center. So this would allow us to keep that home, put the road in like we want to, and gain some value back from it and keep it on the tax roll. We did receive two prices. One was for $911 for the 911 Merah property, and the other one was for $32,000. Before we went ahead and started putting together the contract for sale, which is gonna require a first and second reading by council, we wanted to come back to you first and say, is this agreeable to you? If it is, then we'll work with the proposed low bid, or in this case, the high bid, to go ahead and sell this to them and bring it back to you probably in February for the actual contract for sale. So if council agrees with the $32,000, then you would need to go ahead and vote on that tonight.
Okay, sir. Good. Thank you. Do we have a motion in second?
Move approval?
I second.
Okay, discussion?
They got two bids, that's not a.
That is correct.
I just wanna, I appreciate city manager and staff doing it through this bid process. If you remember before, we were looking at just selling it outright to the first person that had come along, and I'd asked for it to go to bid, even though it's not a gigantic bid. So I appreciate, you know, going through this extra effort on this, and I'm, you know, I think it's notable that a lot of people will look at what we paid and what we might sell it for, and they'll see such a discrepancy and not understand that we gained value in the meantime by gaining the land to allow us to make that connection, to relieve some of the pressure on Whiskey Road, to make the connection through Christie Place into the public shopping center. So, so we gained value in exchange for maybe the decrease in the sales price. So that's my remark.
Item Five?
We need a vote.
Oh, we did, okay. Show of hands, please.
Okay, we'll be back to council at a later date.
Okay, it was six to one.
We'll be back to council a later date to actually have the final approval for the sale of this property.
Item Six is Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Aiken and the Aiken Community Playhouse. Mr. Ledoux, please.
No, we got the accommodations tax fund.
Wait a minute.
Skip the item.
Accommodation tax.
Beg your pardon.
Team effort tonight.
Item Five, Approval of the allocation of accommodation tax funds. Mr. Ledoux.
We're just trying to move the council generally along.
I know.
At a previous meeting that we had in November, the chairperson over the accommodation tax funds, Peggy Pinlin, made several recommendations on how we should be spending this one-time monies that we were receiving from the state. Some questions came up, is there something we could do that would promote Aiken and not be tied to events such that these other recommendations? So they came back and are making a recommendation to you that adds up to, I think it's $149,000 or almost $150,000 on several different items that they feel could market Aiken. The first one is called tourism marketing. This would go on billboards, it would go into several different types of magazines, and it's, again, not promoting any event, but it's gonna be promoting Aiken in general. And that is 75,000 media tour, they would be inviting different writers and different groups down here that will then go back and write articles about Aiken. We've done this before, it's been very successful, and we have received several different types of articles from it. $5,000 for a brochure, we're asking for $30,000, that would be used approximately $15,000 at the Railroad Depot and $15,000 at the Administration and Finance to, again, through displays, video, and other things, ways to promote Aiken as visitors come to both different locations. Lastly, it's a wayfinding sign. Council has already approved wayfinding signs a number of years ago, we did not have the funds for it. These are signs that are mounted on post that will direct people that are visiting Aiken, how to get to Citizens Park, how to get to the museum, how to get to Holklund's Garden. You know, for many of us, it'd be like, why are we putting these signs up for a visitor? It's, it's sorely needed. So again, altogether, it's 149,000, it still leaves us $44,500 to do other things in the future. Peggy is here tonight to answer any questions. Elizabeth Harms, who will be actually doing the magazines and doing several of these projects, is also here if you would like to ask them any of these, about any of these projects.
Okay. Do we have a motion in second?
Just don't move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Ledoux and I had a discussion about item number six. We actually have not put, what do you call it, the foyer or the entry for the Administration Finance Building on our list of things to, if you will, make it feel like you're an agent. I'm just wondering if item number six, that money would be appropriate for that or part of it, whatever it would take.
Now, item number six, which is again promoting the visitor center at the Railroad Depot, we, when the committee originally came to us, they were gonna go ahead and do just that item, and we had suggested, how about the Administration and Finance Building? We could either use CPST money for that, or we could go ahead and use this money for it.
What I would like to do, and maybe not deal with the money tonight, but we do, actually do not have that on Mr. Parker's CPST project list as a specific item, and I think it may be just an oversight, but I think we should go ahead and put that on his list so it gets some, gets some thought processes going. his list so it gets some, gets some thought processes going, because we have the money in either hand to do that.
If we use this money, then the CPST money can be used for other things, but either way, we know what we want to do. We want to promote Aiken through that lobby area. It's just how do we do it?
How does doing anything to that lobby area encourage tourism?
Well, one, a rack could be in there with different brochures, you could have a video going all the time, a three-minute video about Aiken. The walls could be decorated with different memorabilia, and it's kind of like when you walk into, I think Michael was the one that mentioned it about Old Charlie's, where actually...
Yeah, that was brought up at Planning Commission, and I don't know if Mr. Parker was involved in, but you don't want Reggie and Glenn Parker decorating that for sure, and we.
Or myself.
We get Mr. Michael Umer, who understands Old Charlie's decoration with the history of Aiken, who'd be maybe actually the chairman. But I do think we ought to put it on the list so it starts getting consideration and be sure we involve citizens, different groups and so forth, and just not have a few staff members do it.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Do we have a motion in second? Show of hands.
Wait, I mean, did we just amend the motion to?
No.
Okay, all right.
That was just a.
Okay. Pass is unanimous.
That was a comment to add it on to the capital project sales.
Dick, you raised your hand too, Dick, didn't you?
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry.
All right, pass is unanimous. Item six, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Aiken and the Aiken Community Playhouse.
Mr. Mayor and council, this came up at one of our committee meetings that we had when we were talking about the conference center, and should we continue having a conference center? Should we go ahead and use it for something else? And at that particular meeting, the Aiken Community Playhouse came and said that they would like council to consider the possibility of a different rate for nonprofits that would be used in this particular building downstairs, up here, on a regular basis. We looked at this with staff, we met with representatives from the Community Playhouse, and came up with a pilot program to see if this would work, that would actually lower the rates at certain times of day. Currently, right now, if you wanted to rent the facility during the week, you're renting it for six hours. We don't have an hourly rate. And so, when you, we looked at it and stated that we already have a custodian here somewhere in the city, working till 5:00, many times till 6:00, and so if we opened the facility up before 6:00, $35 would more than pay for his time, plus any setup or takedown that we needed, and actually be more than enough to subsidize that, and then $45, again, Monday through Thursday, after 6:00. This was agreeable to the Community Playhouse. We also looked on weekends, if something was needed and was going to be over the six hours, our rates in the past have been $50 for any additional hours, we lowered that to 45. And then on weekends, if there was a free weekend, which doesn't happen very often, but if there would happen to be one, we would give them a little bit of a discount compared to what a normal person would rent several months in advance. Again, we're looking at, is there a way that we could better utilize this facility more often and help out not just Aiken Community Playhouse, but any other nonprofit that would maybe want to use in the future? So again, when you're reading a memorandum of agreement here with them, but substitute any other name in here that would want to use this on a more regular basis. We think it's an opportunity to assist a nonprofit at a little bit lower rate and still provide for all the expenses and depreciation that we have on this particular building. So before you tonight, we have a memorandum of understanding between the City of Aiken and the Aiken Community Playhouse for a six-month pilot program for the rents of the municipal building. If this works, then we would be writing this into our rental rates and agreement for the future for anybody.
Very good. Do we have a motion in second?
Just don't move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay, discussion?
I have a bunch of.
Yeah.
My, the only concern I have about it is the renting of the council chambers. In my estimation, they can, it's available for use, obviously, as a public facility, but I think having it in the memorandum of understanding that it can be scheduled on a regular basis is just a little bit counter to my thinking. And I would think that they could use it on a on-demand basis, but having it as part of the MOU was just a little counter to my thinking there.
I think that's a very good point you make.
And that'd be fine, because they were probably seldom, if ever, going to use it. The main area is the downstairs, with any overflow possibly going into room 204.
204 I have no problem with, but I was just, my thought, and maybe other council members would have a different perspective on it.
The only question I would have is, why would you put a 90-day restriction on trying to get a reservation and so forth? Because we do have some annual-type events that, you know, they haven't done it so far, but if they decide to do it, if it's a facility that comes in handy if they happen to have something across the street, you know, to have something like a pre-party or post-party, you know, they can predict their schedules almost a year in advance, and that would make a lot.
You're providing a reduced rate, so the theory is, let's give the folk, the people that pay full rate, let them make any reservation beyond 90 days, and it would be space available, so to speak, at a reduced rate for the nonprofits, which seems to me to be fair.
Okay. That was exactly what we were trying to do.
My question is in reference to the $1 million liability insurance policy. As an employer of a nonprofit who really hasn't had any fundraisers but looking forward to having some in the future, what would that cost? Because we've never had to purchase such a policy, so can anybody, does anybody have a general idea of how much?
They can purchase it through our, through Municipal Association's tulip program, which is, you know, Municipal Association offers the insurance that the city uses for its general liability and all that, and as an ancillary service, they offer for special event coverage, something called tulip coverage, which is an acronym for something. And Roger knows more about it than I do, but it's a, it's a reduced-cost event-type liability coverage for single events, you know, one night, and you can get, if you're going to have alcohol involved, you can get liquor liability as well. But you want to add anything, Roger?
No, you're doing fine.
But to answer your question on the million dollars, I would, I would believe that most nonprofits have a million-dollar coverage for what they're doing. Would you not? I'm sure y'all do. Check.
You're sure?
I feel sure that y'all, y'all have.
Almost everything has.
I don't know which nonprofit you're referring to, but I feel sure.
It's a pretty general number of $1 million.
By place of employment, of course.
Yeah, so I'm sure you've got that and then some. But for small, for small old groups that might not have any insurance, they can purchase that tulip policy, and I think it was $125 or something like that.
It depends on the size of the group and whether or not alcohol was involved or not.
Yeah. So it is an extra cost, but it's a very important thing for the city not to get roped into a big problem if one of these events turns into.
Roger, who will be managing this?
Sarah Rideout and Susan Mimmy are the ones that book the facility, and then they in turn determine whether Chris or Bob are two custodians, which one will go ahead and oversee it. Generally, during the time that something is going on, on a weekend or even an evening, they're doing other custodial duties, either in this building or the building across the street. So they're not just sitting here caretaking. And again, this is a pilot program. If it's successful, and we should know within next, really, probably won't take three months, it'll take two or three months, whether it's working, and if we see that the million dollars is a problem, we could relook at that. We just need to be very careful that we are covered. I'd like to say, probably would never happen, but if and when an accident does happen, because it will happen at some point in time, we do have some coverage there.
Oh, definitely.
Well, I do like the reduced rates. I think they're very affordable.
That recessed floor down there with those steps, that's a liability claim.
Waiting to happen.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I amend the item number two on page 199 to remove the second-floor room known as City Council Chambers. That's actually in the memorandum of understanding on page 199 at the very bottom of the page. Move to remove that comment, and the second floor known as the City Council Chambers.
How about room 204?
Huh?
How about the?
No, that's fine. 204 I didn't. It's a conference room open to the public already, well, this room is too, but other people use 204. I don't know that it's open to the public. I tried to use it one time.
Yeah, that's true.
Had all kinds of flack.
Okay.
How about Fred's office? I think we've overcome that problem.
Anything else? We've got a motion in second.
No. He was here.
Show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass is unanimous. Item seven, approval to increase funding for Dupont Landing Regional Detention Pond. Mr. LeDuke, please.
This, this one goes way back to 2006, 2007. Dupont Landing was just a twinkle in the eye of Harvey Ramsour's here tonight with the Second Baptist Community Development Corporation, and we agreed that we needed to have a regional pond somewhere in that area, which covers all the way to York Street, all the way beyond the bypass, it encompasses more than 100 acres of land, and typically, that entire area would flood at certain times of the year. Council at that time said, to help this development, to work with Second Baptist, and because we need a regional detention, retention pond, we will give you $100,000 towards the storm drainage in this area. We're now eight, nine years later, the project is moving along very nicely. There's 53 homes that are built out there. The first nine were by a nonprofit, that's how they got their funding. The next 43 or 44 are a for-profit, and they have another 40-some to continue construction on, or they're going to go ahead and have an assisted living facility within that area. Both of those should be adding tax value within our community. Additionally, they just had the Clyburn Rural Health Center completed. Wrong title. Did I get it right?
Clyburn Center for Primary Care.
Sorry. On that property, so it, it's really developing into an area that I think was really kind of almost beyond our imagination back when we first envisioned this. The price, like anything else, has gone up on certain things. The storm drainage, instead of being $100,000, which was what we had estimated at this time, is running at $112,000. We recently got a letter from the Second Baptist Community Development Corporation asking for an additional $12,000 to cover those costs, to make them whole. So we are here tonight before council, asking that you would consider funding them an additional $12,000. If you do this, then it would come out of our stormwater budget that we have in '06.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second?
I so move.
Second, Mayor.
Any discussion?
You added the issue that I had coming in was, why the extra 12? And obviously, I think in eight years, we can understand that the cost would not have been accurately predicted, so.
We were looking initially at some open ditches in there, they're now all closed ditches. The pipe size has increased from what we had originally thought. Again, when council made that decision of $100,000, very little, if any, engineering had been completed on that. When the final engineer came in, instead of a 24-inch pipe, they needed a 30-inch. Instead of 30, they needed 36-inch, so everything grew in cost, and I asked Harvey, I said, now, this is it, right? And he said, yes. If you could provide that extra, just, you're supposed to say yes to that, Harvey. Okay. That this would go ahead and take care of those costs for this development. But it's been a great partnership, I feel, for this, and we discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, so.
Okay. We've got a motion in second. Show of hands, please. Pass is unanimous. Item eight, approval of a resolution.
This is a side note, Mr. Mayor. If somebody hadn't gone out there taking a look at this Dupont Landing, they owed it to themselves to go out there. It is gorgeous, and you can see Gail's new facility. I mean, it is, I keep telling Reverend Slaughter, we need about four more, though. Just get that model and just plant the model over.
You're right, Steve. It is gorgeous out there. Okay, item eight, approval of resolution regarding the sale of homes in Crawson Park. Mr. LeDuke, please.
When the City of Aiken, back in the mid-2000s, start looking at, after finishing up Tool Hill and looking at Crawson Park, a number of homes were purchased. This was during large increases in prices at the time of homes, and the thought at that time was, we could probably sell these homes between $85,000 to $100,000, because that's what we were receiving in Tool Hill. Shortly after that, the recession hit, and the homes which we purchased and then remodeled came in between those prices. We have since lowered the prices a couple of different times. We have just recently sold two homes in that development. Both of those were sold, one for $63,000, one for $65,000. We feel that if we take the homes that we're currently marketing in the mid-70,000 and lower those to what is being appraised out there in the mid-60,000, we'll bring in a whole different group of folks to come out there that probably at this point in time are thinking, well, $75,000 is a little bit higher than I want to pay, or a combination of Crawson Park and the price. And so we're asking that council would consider lowering the prices as per Exhibit A, which shows you the current listed prices and the proposed list price for each one of those homes. It's about $10,000 lower, ranging from anywhere from about $9,000 to about $10,000 for each one of these homes. We have checked with the realtors in the area that have been working with us. They have looked at these prices, and they agree with what we are stating to council. And so for your consideration, this is approval of resolution regarding the sale price of real estate owned by the City of Aiken, Crawson Park, to those reflect the prices shown in Exhibit A.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second?
I so move.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion.
Yes, we have one house that goes back to the rent to own or lease to own, and Mr. Beedenbach can probably help us out, but the person that's in there has been in there almost five years, about halfway paid for that house with the new prices, which a number of us think are right. And I think since we've done this tonight, the staff should look at going ahead and making that note for, it was another seven, five, six or seven years, and they would own the house with a lease to own. I think we need to go ahead and move that forward with that family. I understand it's a very well-kept place.
It's the Williams. They have been great to work with, they have not always consistently made their payments on time. Emery and I discussed the situation this afternoon, that if we do lower the prices on these homes, we certainly need to look at that contract and find out, what did they originally contract that home for, and how do we make it so that they can become, instead of a lease to purchase, get them on some kind of contractual basis, or work them to get a private loan for that home?
I think, I think we need to do that. They've, they've struggled with employment along over the years, but they've obviously been very faithful for almost five years now, is that right, Stuart? They've been in the house five years, I think, and whenever they weren't employed, then they are catching that up. So I think we need to go ahead and, even if it's a loan to the city, whatever it is, to go ahead and incorporate that at these prices, if you will.
And then we have five other homes that we talked about. Again, I've talked, when I said we, I'm talking about Emery, Langston. I said "we," I'm talking about Emery, Langston, that are rental homes. And we need to reevaluate that. And again, is this going to be like a forever rental? Are we going to try to convert these at some point in time? What are we going to do with these families, so that we get really more of a holistic look at the fact that we've got 10 homes out there that need to be removed? We've got 10 that are for sale. We've got five that are rental. And then we've got a number of just vacant pieces of property that we have to go ahead and come up with a plan of action for council.
Well, as I recall, we talked about the rentals, and I think the rentals are all one years. But council did not seem to have the will to want to deal with that issue. So, until we get the will to deal with it, they'll be in there forever.
We just didn't want to throw anybody out on the street.
We don't have to throw anybody out in the street.
But I like what we're considering about the price adjustment.
The rental of those houses has fallen off. It did for last year, because looking at the amount of income that was in the June 30th, 2014 budget, it was way down, like half of what we'd gotten a year before. So, obviously, some of these are not rented. But we need to move them one way or the other. And, you know, maybe we could make a deal with Harvey here to take them off our hands, really economically or something.
Well, he'll hopefully be owning a ton of the lots out there very soon, when we hear back on this grant that we submitted in conjunction with them. It's not 10, it's eight.
I think we ought to get out of the real estate business. I think I mentioned that before. We're not very good at it. Let the professionals do.
Well, we did a good job in Tool Hill.
We did.
And we did a good job in some other areas. The market is changing.
Different market. Totally different.
Chesterfield, please.
Don't forget the economy there.
Those are all success stories.
Those are all markets that are better.
If I will, I just want to applaud Councilman Ebner for his comments regarding this family. They went through some strains, as families do oftentimes when the market is tough. And given the time that they have been in this home, I just want to applaud you for bringing that to our attention. The second thing is, things are moving with Crawson Park. Emery showed the house to a person about three, four weeks ago, Emery, that we've identified. And then today, there was another person that I spoke with that wants to contact Emery based on the proposed, if council approves this, adjustment of prices. So, people are interested, and they're looking to look at these homes and see if they want to invest. So, that's good news.
And I think Janice is doing a good job at promoting the sale of the homes.
Always speaking of Crawson Park, I understand there was a fire out there a couple of days ago, then electrical fire. Does anybody know about that? Anyway, maybe those folks would be looking for...
Chief.
Chief, when was that?
I needed a run to get up through Saturday morning.
Saturday morning?
How much damage?
It was intact at one point.
Family at home when it happened?
Everybody's safe.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass this unanimously. Item nine, resolution approving city policy on water and sewer, sanitary sewer services to unincorporated areas. Mr. LeDuke.
Yes, sir. This policy's been in effect for a couple of different decades. It's had some revision, but we asked the planning commission to do a thorough review of the policy for the provisions of city and water in unincorporated or areas outside the city that will frequently, when a well fails or something like this, they'll come to us and they need water immediately. And this helps staff guide them as to who could approve it, how can it be approved, and under what format. Staff looked at this after the planning commission had made some changes. We went back and asked them to make a few other corrections and changes, which they did at this last month's meeting. We feel fairly comfortable with this. And so, for your consideration, Knight, this is approval of resolution to adopt a policy regarding requests for water and sewer to unincorporated areas.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in a second?
So will Mr. Mayor.
I so...
Okay, discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass this unanimously. Item 10 is the election schedule for 2015 council elections.
This year, there are three council members, one being the mayor. And then Councilmember Diggs and Dwar are eligible for reelection. And this is laying out to you the schedule for the election process. This is, Sarah, this does not need to be approved, does it? No, this is just for your information. Because I know a couple of council members have asked me when and what was going on. And so, this, so you all could prepare for the upcoming election. Okay, thank you, sir.
You know, the one thing I'd like to add, given the confusion a couple of years ago, and given that this is only a city election, I wonder if the city attorney could prepare a one-page guide for people who are thinking about running, because I honestly don't know where you'd sign up. I think you used to sign up with a party, but now I think you have to go down to the county registration office. I had to pay a fee to the party to run, and I don't know how that works. So, I wonder, just a one-page guide for people that are thinking of running, so they know where to go and what to do and stay out of trouble.
I suspect the election commission has already come up with something like that. But I can get with the chairman, and we can talk about that.
That's right.
I'll get you something.
Yeah, I don't know that, I haven't seen anything, but it would be nice to have something like that.
We could go ahead and get Sarah, who works with Mr. Johnson and the other members, and Gary, and come up with something for you. And I'm glad you're asking now, because this gives us plenty of time to get...
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
I think it exists, but I think a lot of change has been made with the building relocation and how you do it. And I was...
Well, the state has made some changes that got everybody into...
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Real mess.
A mess. That's a good word for it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome. Under petitions and requests, item number one, approval of resolution concerning request to use TAP, TAP funds for bike lanes.
Okay, the next two items are, again, similar to the rezoning we had, companion request. The South Carolina Department of Transportation receives funds from the Federal Highway Administration every year to allow alternative forms of transportation. And that's what they call a TAP, a transportation alternative program. That alternative program could be sidewalks, it could be bike lanes, anything that would enhance other modes of transportation, other than vehicular modes of transportation. In this particular case, all the metropolitan planning organizations in the state, and I believe there's seven or eight of them, ours is arts, the Augusta Regional Transportation Study, receives a certain amount of money every year. Now, that amount could change in the future, but for the last several years, they've been receiving about $163,000 for transportation alternative projects. One of them that we, probably the best one that I could describe here in Aiken, is we use this type of money to put in the sidewalks from Pine Log Road to Centennial. So, where the McDonald's at, the Armory's at, we put some curb and gutter in there, we filled in the ditches, we put some sidewalks in, and we did that over a number of different years. Tonight, as part of the process for the TAP grant, it asks that you get letters of support to go along with the application. Application's about 10 pages long. You fill in where the project's going to be. You have mapping. You describe what it's going to be. How does it meet with the federal guidelines? Then you put down the unit pricing of what it's going to cost for the project itself. And the last thing is get letters of support. So, both organizations, the one being for bicycles, as part of the element of the Aiken County Urbanized Area Bicycle Pedestrian Plan, is submitting a grant. And then the city of Aiken is submitting a grant. Now, the bicycle alternative one goes through the city. So, in essence, the city is applying for two different grants here. One is for bike lanes and share the lane, striping, marking, and doing that work. And the other one is for sidewalks in Crawson Park. The $163,000 that's available is matched by the city of 20%. So, when you add in our 20% and the 163, you also have about $203,000 that's available for these projects. We have way more than that in sidewalks that we want to put in Crawson Park. The amount for the bicycle projects, again, also adds up a whole bunch more than that. The one question we had with the bicycle, and so Gary put this in the resolution, because council has not reviewed all these areas. They have not said, "Yes, we're going to go ahead and put bike lanes in here," and "No" in other areas. For instance, probably the best example would be Richland Avenue. It's calling for a bike lane, that's a separated lane, on Richland Avenue from Hayne to University. You could do that, but it would mean that you would have to narrow the lanes, probably narrow the median, to get at least four feet on either side of the roadway itself. Or you could widen it, but that would be actually way more expensive. But it would have to be restriped. And as these projects would come up, then council would go ahead and look at it and approve them on an individual basis. So, if they got the grant, then we'd have to come back to council at some later time and say, "Okay, this is what they're proposing. Is this what council wants to approve?" So, that's the bike one. And then the other one across is Crawson Park. They're asking, in this particular grant, for $500,000. If council approves it, they could either go to the arts committee and ask for two successive years. That's allowable, which would get them over $400,000. And they would have to determine which sidewalks would be priority one, two, three, et cetera. The sidewalks or the bike lanes have to have a start and a stop point. You just can't have a sidewalk going halfway or not going to any other location. And so, they like to see where the termini is for each one of those locations. So, the project, again, the process is, you could approve both these, and then it'll be up to the technical coordinating committee of arts to review these and to rank them. And then it'll be going to the actual arts policy committee, which your representatives are the mayor and councilmember Dwar, along with North Augusta, Burnetown, and the county. And they would then vote and say, "Yes, this is what we are going to approve as far as funding." They could approve all 200-some thousand for one project, or they could even split it and say, "We'll give half the money to the bicycle, half the money to the sidewalks." Again, it's, council tonight, though, has to decide, "Are you going to approve both letters of support, one letter of support, or don't want to support either one of them?"
Before we get further, what's the status of Hayne Avenue issue? We need to get that resolved.
Okay. We are currently, right now, looking, the Federal Highway Administration has an experimental program that's in several states, which they're experimenting with a dashed line, instead of a solid line. When you think of a solid line, solid lines are telling the motorists, "Do not cross," or "Do not get into that area." A dashed line says you could cross it. So, if you see a dashed line as you're going down a highway, it means you could move over to the next lane. It means you could move around cars. But if you saw a white line, you're not supposed to cross that area. We are talking to the state to find out how they would feel about us taking that white line and making it a dashed white, a dashed area, which, according to FHWA, would then allow parking and a bike lane jointly. So, you could park in a dashed lane, and when there's no parking there, then you could... But again, they're experimenting with this in certain areas. If, for some reason, the state said, "No, we really don't recognize it," then council would have to make a decision whether or not you'd want to go ahead. Since FHWA is doing this experimental, do you want to go ahead and experiment with that as an alternative?
I would think we would. But again, how long are we going to, how long will it take? Do you have a sense of when they're going to make a decision?
We got this information about 10 days or so ago. Philip Mary brought it to our attention. We've given that to Paige, our attorney, to look into it. She has made some initial inquiries. And our state said, "Well, we basically, we've never heard of this before." I'm trying to be very kind. That's not totally surprised. So, she has, we've given her some other contacts in the state to look at. She's also talking to Tom Young about it. Again, we may be the first ones in the state to try this out. And it might be something that would be worthwhile to try out.
Well, I think it would.
But that's where we're at on it.
I think it'd be great if we, if we could do it. However, I don't think any of us want to get into a long-term waiting period for that to happen, because we've still got, we've still got an issue on Hayne that we need to resolve.
We need to resolve it. And I would like to think, Stuart, that we could come back at the next meeting, probably, with some options as to what we could do. And again, I got a feeling they're going to probably say, "No, we've never done that before." Just kind of like when we went ahead and re-signalized Whiskey Road with a coordinated system, they'd never did that before either. So, we may be the first in the state. And I think that's a way that we could pilot it and try it out.
FHWA and the other states that has been done, the case studies that I've reviewed, usually the federal government would approve the request within about two to two and a half weeks of the request. We haven't yet, you know, made application to the federal, you know, we're talking to the states. We haven't done to the FHWA. But it isn't a long process at the federal level. You know, how our state handles it is to be determined.
Have they approved any, Phil?
Yes, in other states.
Other states, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions. Now, as a council, are we going to send the arts people a letter supposedly like we did for the widening of the Hitchcock Parkway for the Sansa de Council, supposedly back in '06, I believe, '07, we sent a letter saying that we would like to get it... But is there a letter that the council has sent to arts concerning the bicycle infrastructure, et cetera? I know we have a plan that's got all the bike routes lined up and so forth.
I don't know of any letters. This is the next step here, if we wanted to do this, to get the money. But you mean, in the last, what period of time are you talking about?
I don't care, any time.
Well, I don't know of any letter that's been sent.
Years ago, we sent letters to the delegation.
Yes.
But it was millions of dollars of projects and a wish list that we wanted.
Are there any on record, Dick, that, well, you're on the arts subcommittee, are there any letters that were, we addressed bicycles?
Not that I know of. No, not that I know of. And keep in mind, I don't think we, any of us have been provided a copy of the bike plan. Hayne Avenue gives us an opportunity to try to get our act together on how we're going to deal with bike plans in terms of the impact on neighbors and in terms of the finance. We started out with $210,000. We're down to probably 100, maybe 70, 100? What is it?
It started out at about $240,000.
Yeah.
And now we have $210,000.
Okay, so we have $210,000 left.
We spent about $30,000.
Okay. And this portion of the bike plan alone comes to $312,000. And again, we can't expect that the government's going to give us all of that $312,000. But, I mean, I'm of the opinion that we need to get a structure in place for approval of these lanes. If we approve this tonight, I certainly wouldn't want it to be viewed as approval to do the bike lanes that are listed in Attachment 1.
I didn't take it that way. I see what you're saying, but I didn't take it that way.
Yeah, well, I mean, I wouldn't want, we would want to make it very clear that this is not approval to do anything with bicycle, bike lanes, or shared lane markings or anything. This is just approval for money. But we need to get, and I don't, I'd like staff to come back and give us an idea of how we could structure a process to work with the biking community. It probably should have somebody from Public Safety, somebody from Park and Recs, and make the recommendations that the council shouldn't get into the minutia, but the staff should. And then come back to us when they want bike lanes. And even Richland, from Hayne to University. We've got to look at, how wide are the lanes right now? If, how wide do the, do the bike lanes have to be?
That's all. And you've got, you don't have a copy of the bike?
None of us were, none of us were provided with a copy of the bike plan.
I...
I've got a link.
We were provided a resolution to approve the concept of the bike plan.
There's a, there's a plan.
There is a plan. I'm just saying individually, we weren't given copies of.
Oh, yeah, but you can go biking from here to Edgefield, just about, and down in northern Tennessee.
You access it online. I mean, I've read most of the document.
I understand. It's almost a 400-page document.
Well, the thing that concerns me mainly is, well, basically, I got a lot of feedback from a lot of people, and they're a little bit concerned about the lines on Hayne especially.
Sure.
And I don't know how many of us were aware that those lines were going in. It's like, one day, we woke up and the lines are in there. You know, that concerns me a little bit.
And once that was put in in May, and nobody understood the ramifications of it, the next set was put in maybe October, early November, and that's when we realized what we'd done.
One of the things, you know, once you put a solid line, it's a, you know, it's not a zero sum, or it is a zero-sum game. Basically, somebody gets deprived of an area, and the other one has, you know, sole right over. You know, if you put a, like, on Hayne right now, basically, you cannot park or drive where the solid line is.
That's correct.
You know, now, if they had some kind of methodology in this federal thing, you brought it up, Philip, it sounds great, you know, if we had some kind of a, you know, flexibility, have dashed lines or whatever you want to call them, where you could park and drive and let the biker be careful, you know, getting around. I'm not saying that, I think that's basically the solution. Because if, I've seen the bike plan, and there's hardly two or three streets or major arteries in the city that will not have, of course, were designed for bike lanes.
But with regard to Hayne, we only have two options, if we want to allow parking on Hayne. Option number one is to get this federal highway program where we could make it a stripe line and allow both to share. Essentially, it would be the equivalent of shared lane markings. Option number two is to do away with everything that's there now and put the symbol in the automobile lane. That's the, that's the way right now, that you would have Hayne Avenue as a shared lane marking. No matter what we do, there's going to be a segment of the community that won't be happy. And it, I agree with the Aiken standard, it's time to get off dead center and make a decision. That's, that's why I think we ought to be prepared to make a decision at the next meeting. Whether that decision is, number one, is we're going to try to do this thing with a federal highway, number two, we're going to do the shared lane markings. We should be able to make a decision, maybe not specifically on which of the two, but we can make a decision that we're going to restore parking to the people on Hayne Avenue.
Well, I think staff needs to research this federal rule, you know, so we know exactly what it is, and we can get by, and South, you know, SC DOT will buy off or buy into it.
And that's what Roger is working on now.
You know, if we get all the facts and stuff, you know, I think that's worthwhile.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The resolution on the agenda right now for bicycle infrastructure project phase one is this resolution to the mayor and Roger for funding only.
What you're actually doing is you're letting the people in Columbia know that council is interested in receiving the funding.
And that's what we're discussing.
You'll get a separate, if they approve you, whatever they, however much money they approve you for, that will come back before council for acceptance.
So this resolution is saying that we're interested in receiving the funds, that's what the plan is.
We've got other decisions to make later after we get approval.
Well, one thing, my understanding is that we never really voted for putting lines on Hayne.
No, we don't.
But it was in the ordinance, by approving the budget and approving the money that was in the budget for the bike lanes, just magically appeared. Am I wrong in that?
Who are you asking? Anybody that'll answer you?
So council, council did not vote to put bike lanes on Hayne. That's true. That was a decision, as I understand it, made by the city manager, given that there was money in CPST two for bike lane markings, and...
That's correct.
It was a unilateral decision.
But that's the rationale, instead of us voting on, we actually voted on the ordinance approving the budget, which had CPST money for the stripes, and that was the rationale used for putting the stripes in.
We approved the resolution, which, in an effort to make us a biker-friendly community, and I think, let's not lose track of that.
Yeah.
We still want to be a biker-friendly community.
I agree.
We just need to integrate the needs and demands of each community together, but we just approved that general concept.
Yeah, but the general concept resulted in the stripes. Like I say, I think anytime, well, in the future, let's get the facts, and then we'll take a look at it.
That's why I say, we need a structure in place, with, the staff needs to give us a sense of what it ought to look like to get, to get a better performance next time we're going to put bike lanes in.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a motion to approve this?
No, we're still discussing it.
We need to.
That's what I'm about to try to do.
I've asked the city clerk to put page 217 up, which is the resolution.
Thank you.
And you need to read that third paragraph, and then you read the next one, it just reemphasized it, refers to attachment A, and when this thing gets to the state and federal government, they're going to want you to put bike lanes on Hampton, on York, on Richland, on Park, University Parkway, and Vile Blue's. And, I mean, that's what we're voting on, is money for that. And that's the way I read it, you read number, the paragraph three, and then you go to paragraph four, and it pretty well says, city council has approved that plan, which is a...
Well, but it also says, the footnote number three on the back page says that they recommend it only if they can be accommodated without impacting parking availability, and if they can incorporate the restripping with only a change to the road diet, that meaning no change to the curb, got to locate the road footprint, et cetera, et cetera. So with that footnote, you know, it...
That footnote's not referenced in the order. The footnote is not...
It's part of exhibit A.
If it's not in the resolution, and...
It's as much exhibit A as number one, two, three, four, five, six are.
I can tell you this, when it gets down to the bottom line, it's what's on the resolution and not the attachments. We have some behind-the-scenes differences between the attorney and myself on that.
I defer to our city attorney to tell me if that footnote is relevant or not.
Can you clarify that?
My interpretation of exhibit A being referenced in the resolution makes exhibit A part of the resolution.
Including the notes?
Yes, yes.
I mean, I get your point, I think it's a good point, but that's, I also think what that item three in the footnote says.
Well, when we voted on the first resolution, no one said we were voting to block parking in front of the funeral home and other businesses along that street. And, I just, when you start dealing with the state and the federal government, they're not going to see note three. Well, that's too bad. You know, it says bike lanes are recommended, and this is your list of them.
That's how we wound up with the stripes, as it is.
Well, I don't know that that's exactly how we ended up with the stripes as is, but, I mean, if, if they approve the funding, the tap money, and then we do that which we can do under the provisions of our bike plan, and as fits item number three, they can't come back and say, you know, we don't count number three, because we can obviously say it was there, y'all approved it. I mean, they can't, they can say they're going to hold us to one, two, three, four, five, six, but, but we can't hold them to item three?
Let me just add that if you look at page 217, the third paragraph, it refers to the City of Aiken Infrastructure Project Phase One, which is this sheet, a copy of which is attached, as you stated, here to as exhibit A. So this is attached to it, this is part of the document. Am I wrong or right?
Right, that's my interpretation.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we get the money, the money is to do this.
Right, that's my understanding.
With 20 percent of the total cost being provided by the City of Aiken.
Subject to the, I mean, subject to those notes, and if it might be prudent, maybe we can say, you know, exhibit A including notes.
But this isn't the way to do this, Philip. I mean, this isn't the way to decide which streets are going to have bike lanes and what kind of bike lane that they're going to have. And that's my only point, is I, I feel sort of rushed into doing this before we have our act together on how we're going to do it. We know for a fact, we've got to tell the people, we know for a fact that we've got to tell the people next time, and we know for a fact that, that we need to evaluate the cost. We've got $200,000, that's all we have, and any more than $200,000 is going to come out of the budget that we're going to start working on next month.
Mr. Mayor, question regarding the funding, is there a deadline on the fund? When is the deadline?
The deadline is tomorrow. The application has to be turned in to arts.
Could it be done without...
The application has already been turned in, but the, any letters of support, they'll need by tomorrow afternoon.
Is there a way to do it without that list of projects to make the application for the tap funds?
Let me say this, we, Roger and I, at different times, talked to Tom about this, because I, you know, I think we were concerned, we all were sharing our concern about, you know, is this in stone? Do we have to do these things? And the answer really is yes, except where something cannot be done, you know.
What out of three says?
If there's some reason why on one of these streets, or many of these streets, that you find out that you don't have the space and that kind of thing, then you don't have to do it. But that's, that's my quick summary of what we talked about several times. Roger, what do you, what do you say?
The process would be, again, let's make the assumption that council decides to send a letter of support for this grant request, and it is approved by arts, the, I believe the first week in February is when you'll be meeting.
That's the next arts subcommittee meeting, February 4th.
So, and then arts approves it, then the tap grant would go to the state, they would still have to review it and approve it, that'll take another two or three months. If they approve it, then they'll come back to the City of Aiken, write up a document just like SIB did, it'll be a multi-page document, about eight pages long, which is a letter of commitment, financial commitment by the City of Aiken. So at that particular time, if, if the project was to restripe Richland Avenue from University to Hayne, and that was the project that was finally submitted and approved by SC DOT, that would come back to the city, the city would then say, vote on it and approve the 20 percent funding from the City of Aiken. So there's going to be another step, that if, at some point along the way, that you decide you don't want to go forward, you just don't approve that request. That is why we put in the statement at the very bottom of page 217, that the city council reserves the right to decide on the acceptance of the tap fund grants, once it's determined the extent of the tap funds that may be made available to the City of Aiken. So you still have the right reserved, that if you don't want to accept the tap grants, once they're approved, you don't have to. But again, you have two choices here, you could approve one, not the other, you could split the money, or the third option is you don't have to approve either one.
Where in the, are you saying we reserve the right someplace in the ordinance?
Yeah, in the resolution.
Yeah, in the resolution.
Looking at 217.
Last sentence of the fourth paragraph.
But not accepting is going to impact the sidewalks in Crawson Park, the money that's available for that.
That'd be a separate, as I understand.
Yeah, that's, would we be able to do that separately?
So that was, in discussing with Gary, we added that one sentence in there, that you do have the right, or you reserve the right to go ahead and approve or not approve it at a later date.
We'd look foolish, quite frankly, saying, give us the money, and then back and say we really don't want it.
I agree, it's...
And the other thing is, we haven't talked about it, the fee, the cost alleged in this document to put the stripes on Hayne Ave and both lanes in both directions, $39,000. I don't know whether that $39,000 is a good number or not, I don't know where it came from. This whole $323,000 is...
That sentence, though, talks about accepting the tap funds. It doesn't, it doesn't talk to each and every item that's on the...
No, no, but my point, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, is that it's listed as $39,000, and my point is, I don't know whether that's good or not. We put the lane, we put the lanes on one side of Hayne for $23,000, and then we thought we were going to have to spend $17,000 to take them up, and the city manager found a way to do that at significantly less cost, but I don't know whether that $39,000 is a good number or not.
What happened?
Or any of those numbers, that's what...
Well, I wasn't talking about the money at this point in time.
I read this.
I'm just reading what we were talking about, several of you were talking about. But I read that thing, not, that still doesn't answer the question about, do you have to abide by the list? It just says you have the option to not take the tap money, right? That's essentially what you said.
When I read this, I saw the headings, it's...
If you don't take the tap money, you can't afford to do the list.
Well, I know that, but, well, if we take the tap money, the question is, do we have to, have to do each item? That's what was coming up, that's what we talked to Tom about.
Do we have CPST money also?
That's where that, the city fund would come from, the partial...
The 20 percent.
20 percent.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lex would like to come up.
Is Tom here?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Tom?
Didn't see you back there. While he's walking, this list calls a scope and conceptual cost estimate, so I'd say that mean that this was somewhat theoretical, or meaning that it was not cast in stone? Is that conceptual, might a relevant word?
I think Tom can answer that now.
Yeah, Tom Lex, resident of Aiken, also chairman of Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The question on the estimates, the unit rates, the mileages are precise. I went out, I measured them myself, they pretty much match what's in the Bike Ped Plan for the beginning to the end of those routes. The unit rates that were used to come up with those conceptual estimates, I'm not a cost estimator, but I do have, from the Bike Pedestrian Plan, in there are unit rates that are typical from across the country, and that's when Alta Planning put the plan together, they put the unit rate table in there for the different types of infrastructure, whether it's bike lanes, shared lane markings, whatever, it's all in the Bike Ped Plan. So I use those unit rates to come up with a conceptual cost estimate for the items on the, on the project list. Clearly, if, when dollars become available, then who's ever going to manage the project, whether it's going to be the city or SC DOT, they will have to go through the final engineering and the final cost estimate, and then based on what the final estimates are, you would end up drawing a cut line on that list to say, this is all of the scope we can really accomplish for those dollars. Of course, you go through that after, you've all had your discussions on the process for determining if, you know, it's okay to put a bike lane there versus share the lane. That's why note three was put in, knowing that that type of discussion would have to take place. But clearly, if, even if we got all $312,000, of which the city's share would be $60,000, when the final design is done, the final cost estimate, it might say, it's really $500,000, well, we can't do the whole scope. So then we would have to meet again and decide where we're going to draw the cut line, where we're going to put the highest priority. One approach would be, well, we know there's a future project to widen University Parkway, so we're not going to spend money on University Parkway, we'll let the bicycle infrastructure be included in that project, so that would come off the list. But yet, a higher priority would be, let's spend what it takes to cover Hampton Avenue, because we have residents over there that need Hampton Avenue for transportation. And so that's the process we go through. Does that, does that clarify it, or muddy the water?
Yeah, but in fact, the cost that, the cost that was expended to do everything on Hayne Avenue was a bid cost. The city just simply goes out to bid and takes the lowest bid, lowest responsible bid, and that's what generated the cost. Now, George Britton will have to tell us whether or not he gave the bid package any suggestion of how much it should cost per mile. So, I mean, $23,000, I think, was what it cost to put in one side, is that correct?
That was all of it.
Both.
Twenty-three, it was about $12,000 for one side, $11,000.
Okay, all right, $23,000 then, yeah, okay.
Which is still high relative to these numbers I'm seeing.
Well, like I say, to put the, all it's required to go in and at least get the stake in the ground to apply for funding is a conceptual cost estimate, and I think you had the discussion, clearly, if we get the funding, then it's, you still have the option at that point to say, well, we don't want to go ahead. But if you don't go in and apply for the funding today, then you're not going to get it at all. And so this is a way to leverage available... And so this is a way to leverage available city dollars with federal dollars, so hopefully we can get more scope accomplished than if we just tried to do it with our resources and without the federal dollars.
Have you just called us the conceptual scope and cost estimate, or, or something like that, just to make it clear that it's merely, it's scope and conceptual cost estimate? I'm talking about moving the word conceptual out front, very first word, so that, so that it's clear that it, I mean, that way if we do item three before we do item one, we don't have the feds on our back. Or if we choose to, or if we can't do, like you talked about the cut line, if we can't do anything more than the first few, you know, they understand it, because it's, I mean, nobody can tell you right now what it's going to cost to do these things that far out.
I can tell you what, what I submit, because I had to submit a package to the, the Technical Coordinating Committee for, for SC Arts. And I gave it to Gerald Jefferson from the county. And the information I gave him, it's similar, it's what you have there, but the title of the page that I gave him, it's clearly identified as a conceptual cost estimate. So there's no question. It's not final, it's subject to change. And again, based on available funding, you have to, you know, it's not enough to do everything. You draw the cut line and say, just using this page as an example, you go down and say, well, we're going to do the first three items, and that's all we have the money for. Everything that falls below it would not get done in this round. But we could still use the federal dollars with the city match to accomplish that scope, and still have money left in the round two sales tax dollars that had been designated for bike infrastructure to use for other bike infrastructure. So we obviously stretch our dollar.
Well, Tom, I got a, I got a question here on your notes. I don't know if everybody's read note three. It says, "Bike lanes are recommended only if they can be accommodated without impacting parking availability." You know, it's fine to have a note like that, and I know what the intention is, but in fact, the solid line on Hayne impacts, you know, business and parking.
Okay, the, the, the whole-
Hayne Avenue marking is already a violation of the note.
I understand. The whole purpose of putting that in was recognizing the contentious issues that we have with Hayne. Hayne is not included in the scope. So recognizing we had other streets that we wanted to address, and knowing that we don't want to make the same mistakes we made on Hayne, we said that if, if we cannot, if it would mean, for example, park avenues in here, well, we knew right up front, we didn't want to take away parking on park avenues. So we just said, you share the lane. But on a, a street like Hampton, there's a portion of it, we know that without widening, which is not part of the scope, the only thing we can put in are shared lane markings. But on the portion of Hampton, from York to down, there, this, it, it looks wide enough where we could put-
On west?
Could put bike lanes. However, in looking at it, working on it with the residents and, you know, talking about it, once we try to finalize the project's scope, if it's determined that we can't fit the bike lanes in, because it would have a negative impact on parking, then we would abandon the bike lanes and just put shared lane markings. And that, that's the whole purpose of this, to try to avoid the same issues that we had with Hayne Avenue.
Well, like I say, to me, it looks like a zero-sum game. You know, the gain for the bicycles taking up space is a zero-sum game, because you're losing parking spaces and vice versa. So maybe the solution-
No, 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 we're not taking, the whole idea is not to take parking space away. It's to still put an infrastructure in place that sends the message, bicycles are on the road, try to make it as safe as we can, without also taking away parking that's needed for, for business, or if it's determined that we, we have to keep the parking there for residential, don't take that away. Don't put the bike lane in, put shared lane marking in. That's what this note covers.
Are you recommending removing the bike lane on Hayne?
I am not addressing Hayne. This has nothing to do with Hayne.
I know it really doesn't, but it, it does, in a way, because this is the same-
It, it doesn't. It, they're totally, they're, we said we learn lessons from Hayne, we don't want to repeat Hayne. Hayne has got to get resolved one way or another. So the, the whole purpose of what we're talking about here is try to get a resolution, so we can move forward and at least have this project on the table with the Technical Coordinating Committee, so we have a snowball's chance of at least getting evaluated to see if we can get some additional money. Now, I will also say, Crowsden Park sidewalks, they are, they are also an important part of the bike ped plan. They are important for safe routes to school. We should have those sidewalks. I will say that in the bike ped plan, it identifies other areas of the city that would be considered tier-one priorities, meaning high priorities. Crowsden Park is tier-two, which would be a lower priority. However, given that it's a safe route to school, I think it's the right thing to do. So by having the city put in both proposals to be evaluated, hopefully we get money for both. But the best case would be, we get money to the city, and we can split it between the two, and at least keep moving ahead and not lose momentum. The whole bike ped plan is, is focused on making our city more livable, more user-friendly for walkers and cyclists. And in doing that, it, it promotes the city for keeping the younger people, bringing more younger people in. From the letters of recommendation we have from the project, I have USC Aiken, they, signed by the chancellor. She is totally supportive of becoming bike-friendly, and specifically giving her students the opportunity to be able to ride their bikes from this, from the university, over to, to Walmart, into downtown Aiken. I have a letter from Downtown Business Development. They have endorsed the project, because they recognized, from looking across the country, those cities that are bicycle and walking friendly, the downtown area becomes a destination point. It brings people into the town. And guess what? That's good for business.
And in the interest of trying to get us to the point, move us forward, get us to the point where we can take a vote, Gary and Roger, would, is it possible that we could add to the resolution, as we're saying that council reserves the right to decide on the acceptance of the TAP funds, can we also say, and reserves the right, to modify the sequence and the sites listed on the scope, in the scope, something? In other words, we're reserving the right to, to make future changes, if for whatever reason we determine, you know, one road, we really can't do the bike lane, or even the shared lane, or whatever, we don't want to do it? In other words, can we put a disclaimer in there that reserves that right as well, so, so we can, some point, to some point where we can-
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure there's as much a question for me as it is for Tom, is that going to have an impact on the application as you go forward?
Yeah, please explain that, Tom, because when we talked before, it came across to me that, you've got to pretty much do this here, unless something comes up in some way that you can't do it. And it's not just the money's not there. We know we can't do it if we don't have the money.
Send them a resolution the way we want it.
But changing it. So this needs to be perfectly clear. What can we do with these items, or what we can't do with them? In other words, if we, if they have the money, do we have to do that? Just what's on that paper?
Okay, the, the note, note three, which is part of the project's scope that was given to the Technical Coordinating Committee, and I believe by reference, it's in the resolution. Note three addresses anywhere in the project's scope that talks about bike lanes. Bike lanes are the, the point of contention, and are the areas where we could run into issues because of parking, or clearly we, we don't want major road projects where we got to change gutter lines and things like that. So anywhere in the project's scope that it talked about bike lanes, note three was added to say that if we can't do it, because it would take away, it would take away parking that the city doesn't want to take away, or it would require a major footprint change to the roadway that can't be done just by moving lines, then, then the default is, instead of bike lanes, share the lane. Share the lane is a no-impact to the, to the existing roadway footprint. All it means is you would put paint in the road, far enough away from where cars are parked, so cyclists riding in the road are not going to be susceptible to, to doors being opened. And that's generally when there's parking, you put it in the middle of the lane, as opposed to on streets where there's no parking, you can put it closer to the, to the side of the, of the road. That doesn't change the road footprint, it doesn't impact parking, and it's just a matter of the project's scope now paying for the paint to put the, the markings on the road.
So are you saying that we can, when we get to some of these items, if we don't want a lane, bike lane, we can put the share at park?
Yes. The only thing that, that we'd be asking is, let's look at it real hard to see that we, we can't put the bike lane, because that would be the preferred. But if it doesn't fit, go with the shared lane. Now, how would you make it fit with an existing road footprint? What, you know, one alternative, I mean, we, we talk Hayne. Hayne and the section where you have the bike lanes is very wide. One alternative is clearly narrow the travel lanes. That may require looking at change in the speed limit. We already know that residents walking and crossing there at Hayne Park are concerned about cars flying around that corner. Well, by narrowing the lanes, what you do is you do, you go, you have a, a traffic calming effect. It also buys you room, so you could have, on the one side, you could have a bike lane and parking. You'd put the, you'd put the, the parking outward between the bike lane and the travel lane. On the other side, you probably wouldn't be able to do that, maybe you'd just go with the shared lane. But by changing speed limits, then you can also narrow travel lanes, narrow the, the center lane, and buy the space you need to put the bike lanes in. I'm not trying to propose that as a solution, I'm just giving it as an example right now.
But even if, even if you would propose that as a solution, I assume that, and I would expect that it would be in coordination with the neighbors, whether you have an open meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can I assume, based on what you said, that you will support removal of the bike lanes from Hayne Ave, and, and whatever we do, either a shared lane marking where they are now, or a shared lane marking, a shared lane marking with a federal highway stripe line, or a shame, a shared lane marking with the decal in the center?
I'm not going to get pinned down in it, Dick. I will give you-
Sorry, but you need to be pinned down.
I will, I will give you the answer that I've given you before. Preferred bike lanes. However, if in your deliberations, you conclude that there's no alternative that's suitable for keeping the bike lanes, then, then putting a shared lane marking down the center of the lane, that is, that is an alternative that still works.
Well, it's preferable to work together with this.
But I, I think you also, the alternative you have not discussed, is that there are a lot of cities that have bike lanes, and they do have a provision, and if people need to use it for special events, they temporarily close them.
That's not legal, I don't think.
No, it is legal.
I know some cities do it, but it's-
It is legal.
Regarding this, regarding this resolution, if what we're saying is that we'll support it if we have flexibility in the list, and we won't support it if we don't have flexibility in the list, let's put the words in the resolution granting us that, so we know for sure, and, and vote on it, and let the chips fall where they may, if we get the TAP funds or not. If, if we don't have flexibility, we don't want the TAP funds. If we do have flexibility, we do want the TAP funds. Let's put it in the resolution and vote on it.
I think we ought to go ahead and get the TAP fund, because we have it, we're short time.
Mr. Mayor, have some questions. How often can we apply for these funds? Is it once a year? Why are we the day before this? We bring up all of these things we can do. We have $210,000. Why can't we take Attachment A, spend some of that money, and get exactly what can be done, rather than somebody propose this, and, well, our alternative is this? Let's go out and do the engineering base and bring it back in. I mean, what's, we've been talking about this for at least a year now on council. Instead of assuming we're going to do this, because I can tell you where Tom's going to come from, but if this gets approved, he's going to stay on bike lanes. And Reggie's over here saying, wait a minute, we don't want to give up any parking or anything. We need share of the road. And I think we ought to do the engineering, have a, we know what the road's too wide or too narrow. And remember, you've got to go to SC DOT, and in some places, these are county roads, possibly. So I don't see what the rush is to do this the day before we have to turn it in. I'm sorry.
The only rush, I think, and what I'm hearing, is that we've got a deadline to even-
Tomorrow.
Ask for this money.
I'd do it next year.
Ask for this money.
I'd do it next year.
Well-
Why, why wait?
We keep getting into these things where it's the last minute. You know, I'm almost at the point-
But if we ask for it-
At the last minute, I'm not going to vote for it.
Whether we get the money or not, and-
We can always say no to the funds. I can't, this, this-
I'm sorry.
First of all, let's resolve, Mr. Mayor, that we are not talking about Hayne Ave. Is that correct? Hayne Ave is not included in this discussion. We're talking about accepting funds. Period.
The possibility of accepting funds.
Right.
We're asking for it.
This is not that hard.
If, if we, in fact, get it, or if we don't get it.
Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Price, but I just don't trust the system. Let, let me make a comment. Oh, he's got some up here.
I don't want to. I'm not talking about Hayne Ave, I promise you. What I am talking about, though, is, first of all, look at number, I, I, has any, how long would it take to go out and measure Richland Ave going up that hill, to see if there's room for bike lanes, and four lanes, and a turn lane? I mean, why isn't that in there? Why don't we know that? And, and, and if it, if, what is retrofit means, and, I mean, we ought to know it. And if retrofit means taking up all the stripes and putting other stripes down, that's fine. We need to know it. I still would want to put in this, why can't we paint some of them, instead of doing this $11,000, $12,000 a mile stuff everywhere? But, but, I mean, the plan is, that could have been measured. That, that could be known, as, as to whether the road has to be widened. And if, if the road has to be widened, then I don't know that you want to put that on your list right now. But maybe you do, I don't know. I'm just, that's my point. The other point I would like to make is, the plan has changed. This is not the plan that was in the 400-page plan. This is a very different plan. The 400-page plan called for bike lanes on Park Ave, and bike lanes on Richland through downtown. And I don't mind that it changes, and I'm glad we're talking, I think we should have already done this, but I don't mind that it changes. But it is changed. It has changed. And so it's very unclear as to what changes are going to be forthcoming. And I would like to see, I hate to suggest a committee. I mean, I don't know who's on this committee. I know that four of the five people that, from the city that were on the committee are not even employed by the city anymore. It seems like we could use somebody from the Design Review Committee, since so much of this is in the historic district. I, I don't know when these changes are made, I don't know who's making them. It's not you all. So it would make me feel better to know there was input from other things. And that's it, I'm sorry. But I do think we should measure the road.
Thank you, Jane.
Guess we, we put all the $500,000 on the sidewalks in Crowsden Park. We've got plenty of room, we know where they're going, and apply for one grant, and next year, we do all the engineering, and we apply for the, for the, whatever we're going to do for the bicycles. Sounds reasonable.
This, and let me just, again, reiterate, there's $163,000 that's available every year. If you decide to put all the money into Crowsden Park, next year, the $163,000 will be there, it'll compete against Crowsden Park again, the bike, it might be North Augusta, it might be Burnetown. I mean, there's no guarantees on whether the money will be there or not. Tonight, though, it'd be very helpful if, to give direction, not only to the Technical Coordinating Committee, that's going to be reviewing these on Wednesday, but also to the mayor and our council member, who's going to be voting on this next week. We're the only application, the bike and the sidewalks. So the chance of it being approved by the state is 99.99% sure that whatever you approve tonight will be approved later on. So it's, and then the other comment that I wanted to make is, the engineering for this work, whatever work is approved, is done by the state, that's part of the TAP. They take 25% off the top for their engineering. But again, it's $163,000 this year, it'll be $163,000 next year, then a year after that. And so there'll be other opportunities in the future for these funds. If you decide tonight that you want to give direction to George Grinton and myself, when we go to the meeting on Wednesday, and to the mayor and council member, Duarte, on next week, to, to spend all the money on one project or the other, or to split the funding, that would be helpful to know that. If council really has a strong desire one way or the other.
What you just said there, did we do, did the state do the engineering on Hayne? Hayne's a state highway.
Well, any, any project that, that's going to be funded through TAP, the state does all the engineering. engineering.
Okay, it has to be funded through TAP, not necessarily.
If our hang-up is whether or not we're bound to this list, then let's put the language in the resolution that says that we're not bound to the list, and let's apply for it. If we're 99.9% sure we're going to get the money, then we'll get it. If we don't get it, then we'll do it next year, like you suggest. I totally agree with what Mr. Dwar said, that we rush into things often without really having all the information we need. We've done that way too much in my short time on council. In this case, if we put that language in here, we've committed to nothing. We've said, yeah, we'd like money, but we might change the list, we might change the order of the list, we might spend more on Item One than what we've listed in the budget, but at least we are in the game, and we have a chance at it. And if they turn us down, if we don't get the money, then we can do exactly what Mr. Edner said for next year. If what we're hung up on is whether or not we're going to be beat over the head with this list, then let's put the language in there that says, you know, we reserve the right to modify or deviate from the list.
I agree with Mr. Mayor.
What I'm hung up on, as I mentioned earlier, is a short notice, again, next year, let's give it to us a couple of months in advance. It's no secret that about this time next year, we're going to be doing TARP, so let's give it to us in October. The other thing that hangs me up is, I'm not sure the city had any, I'm not sure what the role of the city was in picking this list. I think I'm hearing loud and clear that no matter what happens, the city will have a large say on what streets will be involved, and on what kind of lanes will be there, and that we'll make sure the residents get involved. If that's the case, I can live with the application for the money. I still want, on the next council meeting, the agenda for Hain Avenue to get that resolved. And I'll support the request for the money, as long as everybody knows that the decision on what streets to do, and how long to do those streets, rests with the city.
I think all of us agree that that's the way it should be.
Dick, I'm not sure, the bicycle pedestrian plan, you know, already has, you know, the types of lanes that are going to be on various streets and so forth, are, should we just redo the plan, or just ignore it and do piecemeal?
I think Jane made the point that, I don't know what the process is for changing the plan. I mean, obviously, this document's not in the plan, and it's fine. I mean, you write a plan, any plan's going to be subject to change. So I'm not upset that this list was not directly in the plan, but I don't know, who has the authority to make a change to the plan?
I think, Tom, is it correct to say that your group has that?
Well, who's on his group from the city?
The plan is, it's a concept, it's a recommendation. It doesn't say that we can't deviate from the recommendation, but the role of the pedestrian advisory committee is to look at and make recommendations for how to implement the plan. And in that role, we can look at it and recommend that we do deviate. Ultimately, it's the city's authority to decide if they want to do it or not. We're only making recommendations. I will point out, there was one recommendation in the plan that we haven't talked about, which is that the city ought to appoint, have a bicycle coordinator. So that would be the point of contact, to interface with the advisory committee, then as a staff, would bring the recommendation to the council. So that's something that really needs to be implemented. But there's nothing in the plan that says it has to be followed verbatim to the plan. It's not a procedure, it's, we've looked at it, and we recognize that the things that the consultants put in the plan are not doable in some cases. For example, we know that the thought of putting bike lanes on Richland Avenue, it's a showstopper, it just won't work. So we've tried to look at it and say, what's the best way, at least to make a step forward, to implement the intent of the plan, which is, how do we get bicycle-friendly?
Who's the city representative on the committee?
Well, we don't have anyone right now. It used to be Glenn Parker.
And Sandra Corbett.
Huh?
Sandra. Sandra Corbett.
No, 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 she, no, there's two, which committee are you talking about? There was an advisory committee when the plan was originally developed. Sandra participated in that. But on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, which was a recommendation of the plan, that an advisory committee be formed, that committee has been chartered by SC Arts, we have 12 members, and we have, those are citizen advisory members, but then we have ex-official members, which are staff members from local jurisdiction. The city of Aiken represented ex-official member was Glenn Parker. And so we had all of our interface with Glenn. Glenn is no longer an ex-official, because when he retired, then the position was never refilled. So we're still waiting, we're still waiting for someone to be designated from the city.
Which is something we should do, obviously. Now, the citizen advisory committee, are there representatives from, is anybody from Public Safety involved in any of this process?
Yes, yes. We have, we have two officers from Public Safety that participate in our discussions. We have, we have three people from North Augusta. We have a pedestrian, someone right now, that's a, we lost our pedestrian representative, but we have someone new who has stepped forward and wants to look at it from the pedestrian perspective. And then we have members, residents from the city of Aiken, and then other people who are Aiken County residents. So out of the 12, I think we have a pretty good, pretty good cross-section and diversity. We have young professionals represented, represented on the committee, so...
That list available?
Yes. In fact, I share it with SC Arts, I can bring it up. I'm not going to be at the next SC Arts meeting, but I can, I can get it to you, and...
I'd like to see it.
I'll send you an email on it.
Okay, thank you.
Not that Glenn is back with us, can he be reappointed?
Well, I would recommend it ought to be whoever, whoever is from either Recreation, the Department of Recreation, or Planning, technically, is probably where that position should come from.
That's the question, not a suggestion.
About the city manager's decision, I think.
Mr. Mayor, I call for the question, there are no more questions regarding this.
Yeah, I've got one more. Tom, you were talking about Richland, did you...
Richland, Richland, you're talking from, when I talk Richland, I meant from Hain, going back into town, you know, through town, the Richland going out to University Parkway, that's, that's an area where we feel that we should be able to put bike lanes. Now, the comment about we ought to have that information, well, anyone who wants to volunteer to go out there and measure those dimensions today with all the traffic, have at it. I was not willing to do that. That's why it really needs to be up to SC DOT as part of the final engineering, to lay out all those dimensions and look at how that all fits. Yeah, this is something that I did, because they needed a recommendation, Technical Coordinating Committee, they said Bike-Ped Advisory Committee can make the recommendation, but at that point, if it's accepted, obviously, it gets handed over to SC DOT, and they'll do all the engineering.
So we don't have a motion on the floor yet for this, so we need to...
Well, all I would say, if I may, is this is the first step to try to get money. Now, whether we use the money, or whether we don't take it, if it's offered to us, and whether we put it all into sidewalks, or what percentage we want to do that, or in bike lanes, or not, or share the road. I've heard Tom say, now, that it's pretty much up to city council, what we want to do. You said if city council agrees to make a change, then so be it. Yes, ma'am?
Leslie G. O. B., Grace Avenue. First of all, I could point out that I think all of us here are here because we really love this town. This town is a gem. It's the sort of place that people travel all over the country looking for a place like Aiken, and when they come here, they say, oh, my gosh, I finally found home. And this is what we want to preserve. A month ago, my husband and I had the pleasure of being guests at the governor's mansion for Christmas party, and we all had name tags. My name tag read Leslie G. O. B., Aiken, South Carolina, and I went around the entire first floor of the governor's mansion, and I buttonholed everyone from Greenville, South Carolina. And I said, you know, I've never been to Greenville, but I hear it's a beautiful town, one day I really have to get up there. And they said, well, you should definitely come up. And I said, and I understand you have these wonderful bike lanes. And they said, oh, yes, we do, and this is all independent. I mean, one person in the dining room, one in the living room, one in the foyer, one in the back solarium. We are so lucky. The Millkins own over 3,500 acres of land, and they donated the land for these bike lanes. And I said, well, you know, at Aiken, they want to put bike lanes in. And they said, are you kidding me? In that beautiful, charming town, that would destroy those historic roads. Are they crazy? So I feel like, why can't we, if you're going to do bikes, which is fine, have it on a shared access basis, and lower the speed limits? Just have people drive more slowly, and bikes and cars can go on the same lane. Because I'll tell you, I've gone down, come up Hain Avenue from Richland on the way home, from like the Etheridge Center, and we're driving along, and we're in this little narrow car lane, and then there's this little narrow bike lane, and I thought, all you need is someone to hear a ping and look down at their iPhone, and they swerve. Or the person in the bike lane, the ball comes in or something, and they swerve, and boom. Better to have it be, just don't spend the money creating all this crazy stuff, just share, share the roads, lower the speed limits, get everybody to chill out a little bit, lower the speed limits, enforce the lower limits, and we can all live happily ever after. We don't have bike racks, maybe to the west of Plum Pudding, and then to the east of, like around, by the Chamber of Commerce building, and then everybody walk in between. Don't change the parking from diagonal to parallel downtown, because you'll lose all kinds of business, you'll lose parking spaces. Just common sense, you won't have to spend as much money, you can put more into enforcement, more into cameras or whatever to catch the bad guys, and lower the speed limits, and just get the town back to a quieter, the way Aiken was when it first started coming down here. And it's like, I have to say, all the Yankees are coming down, it's like, the speed limits are going up. It's like, no, like, come on, everybody, chill out. This is, this is a beautiful town, enjoy the scenery, enjoy the drive, and let everybody coexist, let the bike riders, and the car drivers, and the pedestrians all coexist, and put up the bike, the bike racks, so people can come into town, and they can park, and they can shop, and they can go back to their bikes, and they can go back to USC Aiken, or they can go to wherever. Just keep it simple and keep it nice, you know?
Thank you, Leslie.
How about, you know, if we look at Attachment One or Attachment A, what if you strike where it says, you know, because that kind of pins us down by bike lanes. Why don't we just have conceptual cost estimate, whatever kind of, you know, whether it's shared or bike lanes, just take the, take the specification out, and then we can go forward and try to get the money, and then when the engineering comes through, then we can make a decision on whether it's worthy of a bike lane or a shared lane marker. Can you do that?
Roger might correct me, but I believe this is a document that has already been submitted to Arts as part of the application process. We were just attaching it to the resolution to show the continuity in the two documents.
So, we need a motion, don't we?
They're just waiting for a yes or no answer.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Is that what you think?
Letter of support.
We're being asked to approve a letter of support for this application.
Correct.
Which is what this resolution is.
Well, if we don't do it, if we don't do this, then we lose the money, certainly, this year.
Let me make a motion, because we, I don't think...
We've beaten this enough.
Yeah, and I think we're supposed to do that before we talk about it, anyway. I move that we approve, I guess I'll only, I can only do one of them at a time, so I move that we approve this resolution endorsing the city of Aiken Bicycle Infrastructure Project Phase One, with an amendment to the resolutions, resolution in paragraph four stating that council reserves the right to modify the projects on the list.
Second.
Shown as Exhibit A.
Okay, any discussion? We have a motion in a second?
Yeah, I'll support the motion with a clear understanding that total control remains in the hands of the city.
That's what gives it, that makes it very clear that council's got it.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second.
Well, paragraph four says, whereas the council of the city of Aiken has concluded that the adoption...
I'm sorry, paragraph five, I don't count well.
Okay.
Paragraph five, where you've got the other reservation of rights, is near the end of that paragraph that begins, now therefore be it resolved.
Okay, and then at the end of, so you're adding to the end of that sentence, or you're adding a new sentence?
Whichever's easier for our city attorney.
Can you rephrase what you were saying?
Yeah, rephrase the motion.
See, my motion is to approve the item before us with a modification of the resolution to say city council reserves the right, this is the last sentence of paragraph five, city council reserves the right to decide on the acceptance of the TAP funds, grants once it is determined the extent of the TAP funds that may be made available to the city of Aiken, and reserves the right to modify the projects on the list shown as Exhibit A.
Okay. We've got a motion. That's your motion.
My second.
Okay. Any discussion? Show of hands, all in favor? Okay. Everybody against. Six to one passes. Okay. Then Item Two. Request for approval of the Application for Transportation Alternatives Program Grant for Sidewalks in Crawson Park.
You have the grant in front of you. We have on page 225 showing the various sidewalks that we eventually would like to see within this development, this subdivision. We know that whether we get $100,000, $200,000, we're not going to be able to complete them all, so, but Arts said, apply for the whole thing, and then we can modify the grant once it got approved by Arts. So we put everything within this grant. So, again, we're asking that council would approve this before it is submitted to Arts for funding of sidewalks in Crawson Park.
Okay, chance to serve. Do we have a motion in a second?
So, Mr. Mayor, that we... I second. TAP grants for sidewalks in Crawson Park, sorry.
Okay. Who's second? Who's second?
I do.
Okay. Any discussion about this? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass is unanimous. Okay.
And council does not want to give us any direction on how you'd like to see the money for Crawson Park?
Well, the split between the two...
What I'm hearing right now is that if there's $200,000 available, we provide $100,000 to one, $100,000 to others.
I would say split them in half.
Correct. Yes.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Do you need a motion and vote?
Well, let's do.
Let the record state that.
Absolutely. Okay. Who made the motion? Who's making the motion on that?
Reggie. It's Micky, and I'm going second.
Reggie, number one, you two?
Is that right, Reggie?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion on that? If not, show of hands, please, on it. Pass is unanimous. Okay. All right. Very good, that's it?
I took a mark, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to all our citizens and folks who visited Christmas in Hoaklands, I'd seen in the issued updates, where we got over $6,000 in donations during the Christmas in Hoaklands, which I never, either missed it last year, or never have heard anywhere before, it's that kind of money, and I think that's tremendous, and I'm grateful to our citizens for doing that.
Sure is. Okay. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, Gary.